This is the time and place for our August committee meeting. We do meet as a committee as the whole. As a committee of the whole, I do call this meeting to attention to order. Boy, I'm stumbling on my words tonight. It's because we haven't met in so long. Hope everyone has had a great summer. So we do have, I just want to note on our agenda that item 1.2 is actually reflected in item 12, new business. So there's not actually an agenda item that we need to add this evening. So we'll move on to presentations. So Dr. Messinger.
Okay. We did not get to officially say goodbye, even though internally we say goodbye to Pat. We did not officially get to say goodbye to Pat at a board meeting. We really just wanted to drag you out one last time and wanted to do it on a really rainy night, too. So we do have something for you. I'm sure the board may have some thank yous verbally for you as well. We do, I know that I, we've talked about this, but I personally appreciate the job you've done, not only for me, but for the board. Cause I think that is a big part of it. But I'll get that if anyone else wants to say anything.
Sure. I would just like to say, Pat, thank you so much. You have made the job of being a board director very easy. And especially the board president, you have, you have made it enjoyable, even at times when it shouldn't be so. We're going to miss having you here. You did an excellent job and I really hope that you enjoy your retirement to its full.
Pat, we've been together a long time. And I'm thankful for your service to us and the many ways that you bring joy to a job that is not always joyful. So yeah, thank you for your service for us and enjoy your retirement, every day of it. I heard you say it feels like vacation. It's the way it should be because you've worked hard. So well deserved.
I, I think it's great that we ordered. Yeah. We ordered the rain just so you would stay for another committee meeting. Great. Thank you. Thanks, Pat.
Now Stacy, tell Ann how joyful this job is.
Joyful. I, I expect joy every day. No pressure, no pressure.
I should mention Ann's first meeting with us. Welcome. Thank you for getting everything set up.
Welcome.
Okay. Our other presentation tonight is John Lewis. John is going to talk to us a little bit about, I'll try to give you some background here. On the, right shortly after the bids, we go through them. Fidavia actually pointed out that there was a subcontractor that was very low. And you know, we're like, okay, don't look a gift horse in the mouth. We'll take it. Turns out that that subcontractor's bid was, was not accurate. There was a contractor that oversaw them. That was bringing it to our attention and at the same time was being bought out by John's company. Am I saying that correctly? Okay. And so they're no longer with us on this project. And instead, John and his company, and they do a bunch of testing and things for us. They now have inherited this problem bid. That was incorrect to begin with. John's going to talk about, a little bit about where we are with this. Because if the bid had come in correctly, I believe it would have been $200 and some thousand dollars more than what it, what it wound up being or what it was. I will also say to the board that John has been instrumental on a pro bono basis. Helping us out with the basin, you know, seeing that there've been some more testing out there. And there's a plan to, for some continued work on that. So we can get that correct. And John's been kind enough to come over and help do that. But, but he's going to kind of talk us through where we are with, with the project over there.
Thank you for having me and I apologize in advance for being here with what I'm going to present to you. So just to summarize a little bit, what Dr. Messinger had said is I'm with Barry Isid and Associates. We're a, we're an engineering firm, but we also do a fair amount of testing and related to construction. Where we're talking about construction materials testing, which is related to the soils and this building steel and those things. We also engage in the testing, adjusting and balancing of the HVAC systems. And also the commissioning of those systems, as well as all the rest of the MEP systems, the electrical systems, the plumbing systems and so forth. So QA plus, which is the firm that was previously engaged to do this work, both here at the elementary school and at the secondary school. Barry Isid purchased, did an asset purchase of that company effective May 1st of 2024. So just a couple of months ago. We inherited basically all of the contracts associated with that transition, actually all the active contracts. Which both, there was a little bit of work left on the elementary school. And also the secondary school was basically just getting out of the ground at that point. So we've been assisting with the, the process of keeping the, the testing work that's required at the secondary school. Sorry, secondary school moving forward while we're trying to sort of negotiate with you guys about the, the fees associated with this. So what I, what I've done for, for Dr. Messinger and also for Brad is we've, we've summarized all of the costs. And the, the bid proposals, if you will, for the work associated with all of those testing services that I mentioned. Construction materials testing, the tab and the commissioning work, as well as you also have indoor air quality work going on. Because we usually recommend that in the case of an existing building where we just want to make sure that we're not causing any issues with the occupied portions of the building. While we're doing work in the, the other areas of the building. As I went through all of those numbers, it became very apparent that the QA plus contract. Was not accurate on any of those numbers. Frankly, I, I looked at all of the contract numbers associated with that and they were all basically incorrect. So I've gone through that process. I've made some adjustments on, on Isid's behalf to try and reduce the overall effectiveness to the district. Some of those numbers, and Brad, you can attest to this, some of those numbers have actually gone down from the original contract. Not by a significant amount, but by some. And then we've had, we have two of them that went up significantly. The testing, adjusting and balancing and commissioning are all being done by one firm. And their, their costs were misrepresented significantly. The commissioning number in the original contract was about 45,000. It's actually supposed to be 213,000. And the, the testing, adjusting and balancing number was 21,000 and it's supposed to be 110. So you can see there's some significant numbers there. Now again, on the, on the construction materials testing side. The numbers have gone down probably $25,000 or so with some adjustments that we've been able to make on our, on our half. And the indoor air quality also, that number has gone down from 52 to 40, 40,000. So the net increase overall, the original contract was for $212,000 and change. And the new requested amount is $438,000. So again, a net increase of $226,000. And again, the majority of that is related to the work associated with the HVAC system balancing and testing. And also with the commissioning of all of those MEP systems. Unfortunately, I don't know what else to say. We sort of inherited this contract and it is an executed contract. So the reality is. You don't necessarily need to do something. I could potentially eat $200,000 in cost because you have a signed contract with QA. Well, it's with QA plus. Now we actually haven't executed. So I can maybe back a little further. Our plan is to actually void that contract and then you sign a new contract for the new dollar amounts. With Isid as opposed to trying to transfer the contract that's, that's incorrect. Our, our desire would be to just void that contract with QA plus and sign a new contract. What we've done with the majority of, the other clients that we took over from QA plus was they just did a transfer of the, the original contract. Because the dollar values here are so far off, we felt it was most prudent to void a contract and then just sign a new one directly with Isid. But that's the ask tonight is basically void that original contract. There have been some dollars spent against that contract. We'll credit those dollar values to the district on the new contract. Cause that work has already been done. You may have paid some of those bills, I believe. So we, and we've actually been invoicing for work that's been done. Without having a, a finalized contract. Cause the, the other option, so in my mind, there are two options. One is void and resign. Second is transfer the existing contract and then hopefully modify the dollar values to be correct amount. At least that's my, my expectation. And you're, you're the accountant. So you tell me which is the best approach from, from the district's perspective.
And I'm, well, you spent the money within the original amount. Right. We haven't gone past, wait, we haven't gone past the difference yet.
So maybe, maybe explain that a little bit. So the, the majority of the dollars on this project are actually at the, at the back end of the construction work. The construction materials testing work is done when they're building additions or when they're building the building. So like when we built the elementary school, a lot of money spent on the CMT portion of it. To make sure the soils are right, the concrete is right, the steel is right, and get the building out of the ground. So we've spent those dollars or some of those dollars so far on the, the secondary school. The testing, adjusting and balancing and commissioning happening once the HVAC systems are installed, upgraded. So we really haven't spent any of those dollars to date. So really all we've spent are dollars associated with the CMT work. And again, we're still within the budget of the project as it was originally contracted, which is why you're continuing to pay the bills.
I'll give you a few things on our end. One, I have an agreement. I will send that first thing. You're not voting tonight.
Right.
It's just for questions or questions throughout the week, we will get answers. I have an agreement. I will send it tomorrow morning, but I want you to have the background before you were trying to digest that. Two, if, if we were to spend all of the contingency and all of our allowances. This, that would put us approximately at budget, assuming soft costs are within line. This would then take us $200,000 over. Now, we didn't spend all the contingency with this building. Right now, we're in fairly good shape with the contingency. We haven't used a lot of the allowances. But I can't promise that, you know, we still have a long way on this project. You know, so I think that. And Brad, you're going to have to help me out. Did Fidavia look at the new numbers?
Leanne had sent them over when we got the proposal for the change in, in contract change in pricing. Dan himself was sent those numbers. I don't recall seeing his reply. Do you happen to have that? Here's what I can tell you. In the original estimate, the original budget for the secondary school. The amount that, that's being requested under the new contract by John. Is in fact in line with what the original estimate was for that line item in the budget. We were shocked when it came back so low. We had it reviewed and under review, like was said, it was pulled out that, you know, some of these material testing. Or not material testing costs, but the.
Commissioning.
Commissioning cost was extremely low. But who were we to question a, a contract that came to us? So we then adjusted our budget numbers for the building to reflect actual contract numbers. Come to find out, the budget originally would have been correct had we held that line item at where it was. But instead we took the credit that we believed we, we legitimately had with a signed contract in hand. So I don't know if that helps clarify the legitimacy of the request or, you know, what other information you might want.
Well, I think we ought to get Dan to confirm that. If I have to call him tomorrow, let me know if you, if you don't have it.
I'll go back and find the email.
I think, I think that's my initial question. So, so it was, John, it was your company that discovered that there was a.
Yeah. As we, as we started making the transition from QA plus to Isid, we started delving into the contracts. We were looking obviously to get transfer information out to, to the powers that be administration to get those letters signed. And we discovered that the subcontracts did not add up to the contract that QA plus had with the district.
So Fidavia did not catch that?
They would not have been able to.
They would not have.
No, they.
The only information that we gave them was, QA plus gave them was the original contract. What they probably, or what they said was, well gee, $45,000 for commissioning on this building. That's really cheap.
Yes.
Probably the words they said. They didn't have anything to compare.
I see. Okay.
They weren't given any of our subcontract information. It was only our number. And as Brad said, the original budget that CRA had put together includes a line in it for the services and it was closer to 400,000 than it was to 200.
So was QA plus, were they a, a subcontractor through the overall general contract or are they a sub-sub?
No, we're, we're contracted directly with the district. So the purpose of these services is to make sure that the contractor, so they're code required, number one. And they're, they're intended so that we ensure that what you paid for is what you're getting and it meets the code requirements.
Okay.
So you actually hired QA plus directly to be your representative to handle these services and that again transferred to Isid. So now we're, we're working directly for the district.
So that, that cost variance did not impact the overall project bid? So we didn't approve a project bid that was unduly low due to this?
No, this was not part of any of the construction contracts. This is independent of the construction.
Okay, okay.
You mentioned that there were other contracts that you took over from, is it QA plus?
QA plus.
Did you have similar issues or were we the only ones that were impacted?
No, unfortunately you were not the only ones that had issues. This, you, unfortunately yours was the largest magnitude one. But there were others where there were similar issues. So.
Okay.
I've been dealing with this. Fortunately, I've only had to go to a couple of board meetings to get. But this is the largest dollar value where we're coming back to the board to say, would you please consider giving us some additional dollars?
So I'm just curious, in terms of contract legal issues, I mean, we've already signed in. We can't rebid this. Basically we deal with you, right? I mean, there's no other.
So professional services are not required to be bid, which is what these fall under. Now QA plus did get competitive pricing for all of these services. And the numbers that I'm presenting, the new numbers I'm presenting were the actual bid numbers that they received. The numbers in the original contract, frankly, I don't know where they came from. My guess is, if I had to guess, is that they used a template and they just took numbers from another job. And they ended up in there and somebody didn't change them. I can't confirm or deny that, but that's what I'm expecting. If I, if I went through the whole process, that's probably what I'm expecting is they copied somebody else's contract, didn't change the numbers and sent it to you guys.
Yeah, I think we'll have, you know, we may have some questions, you know, in the next week that we may have to run some things by solicitor too, just to make sure we're in the clear on these things. Yeah.
Again, my, I obviously apologize for this request, but I have tried to skinny these numbers down to, you know, the original numbers. Actually, if I had gone back to the, the original QA plus numbers. If the contract had been correct, the number actually would have been closer to $460,000. So we've actually taken, Isid's taken a little bit of a hit and reduced it to 438,000. So we have, we have tried to soften the blow at some level, but $200,000 is obviously a pretty significant blow in, in this situation. And as, as Dr. Messinger did mention, we've been, we have been helping out with the elementary school stormwater pond. And I've been sort of trying to help get that moving to get something done. We've come to a, we've done some testing work and we've done some. Some, we have a resolution at this point, or at least a proposal for a resolution on table. We just need to give low bar direction on what to do. And then we're hoping to get that resolved here in the next month or so, so that we can get the, the plantings done. And so we can get that pond functional here before the, before the end of the year.
Okay.
So again, continue to try and move that process forwards. I'd be glad to answer any questions. If there are questions that come up after the fact, certainly let me know. But again, our request would be whatever, whatever. Process makes the most sense from the district's perspective on the contract resolution, but ultimately we'd like to get a contract in place. Cause frankly, right now we're working without a contract. While I'm, I have no issue doing that for some period of time. At some point we're going to run out of the money in the original contract and we're going to want to have that in place.
You're operating on the original contract though. You just assumed that.
Yeah, we, we've assumed that original contract. So the $212,000 that was in that original contract is what we're currently billing against. For the CMT work that's really going on. And the total of the CMT work is much less than that, 212,000. It's, it's probably in the 50 or 60,000 dollar range.
Okay. Great.
Like I said, the majority of the costs is in the commissioning and the tab work.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay.
I don't have any other questions for John, but just probably some more budgetary questions as far as how the, just really understanding how it's impacting that end bottom line.
Yeah. If from an overall project standpoint, going back to the costs that, that we've budgeted. And Leanne is actually keeping a spreadsheet right now with a lot of the things that still need to be taken care of. For instance, we still owe, we had applied for the grant, for a grant for the sidewalk. We did not get it, although some town got a traffic circle and decorative streetlights. And they thought that was more important than a sidewalk for kids to walk on, I guess. But anyway.
You're not bitter about it?
No, not at all. Bethel Township, we still owe Bethel Township sidewalk there and we owe Bethel Township. So she's been keeping pretty good track. We have a pretty good feel of where we are. If again, from a contingency, contingency standpoint, we spent all our contingency and all our allowances and those were deducted down the road. I mean, what this would impact is basically the payment out of fund balance would be $200,000 approximately more.
Great. So full.
The good, I mean, that's.
One more statement is that all of our service is, is our, our time and material. So none of this is lump sum. So as we expend dollars, we would, we would bill. If we don't spend all of those dollars, we're not going to bill for those, for those dollars. So that's again, something that's in there. The other thing that I did notice is in the revised contract that I sent out. I did include our monthly reporting, which, which includes some of our time to come to the sites. I'm willing to actually cross that line item out as well, which would be another $9,000. So if, if that's something that would help with the process, we can also talk about that.
Okay. Great. Thanks, John. We'll take it under advisement and we'll put on the agenda and in the interim, we'll have plenty of questions internally, but thank you. Appreciate it. Yep. And thanks for the work you're doing. Thank you. Okay. Great. Thanks. So the next item is public comment. We did not have any public comment indicated for this evening. So we'll move to the items for discussion and this is to set our consent calendar and discussion calendar for next week.
Yes. The first three are our typical approval minute student activity count and cash disbursements.
Okay. Any questions from directors? Okay. Hearing none. Budget and finance?
Okay. A lot of the stuff on an August agenda is annual. This is, as you know, we have Lebanon County Head Start here in the building. In this building, actually. This is our MOU between us and them that runs for this upcoming school year. 6.2, these are our three right now, three agreements for placements. The, under the administrative level, this actual student, student information and placements are attached. But that's administrative. Publicly, the contract itself is there for those three. There is a list of bus drivers. I think, I don't have a percentage, but I know quite a few of the DB Fisher bus drivers. Did switch over to Christ Transportation. We did meet with Christ two weeks ago, maybe. And we're very impressed with their procedures, their organization, how they're running things. We heard some really good things. Some were excited, I think about that.
I think the biggest news was that they reported that all of our trips have permanent drivers to start the year.
Yep.
Right.
Yep. In addition, I think there's things that a big organization can bring. For instance, they have traveling drivers for the state of Pennsylvania. So if they were to be hit in a particular area with a shortage, those drivers would go to those places for, until they can get them staffed. So I, I think we're, I think we're going to see some good things out of them. And 6.4 then is the, the list of bus stops for the year.
Okay. Questions on these items, six items? How many, how many drivers would you say that we kept from the, do we have an estimate?
I can find out. It's quite a bit.
Quite a few?
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Yep. Any other questions? No? Okay. Great. Then we'll leave those on the consent. No buildings and grounds items. So extracurricular. Uh, no buildings and grounds items, uh, so extracurricular.
Okay, we have, uh, first of all, uh, we continue to add, uh, coaches on the volunteer or assistant level, uh, for pretty much quite a few of the fall and winter sports at this point in time, finalizing a lot of those positions. Eight point two is the fall play, death by chocolate, uh, that they'd like to, uh, perform. Uh, eight point three is our annual list of out of state trips, so wrestling goes on. Uh, I think the one that was added there was a girls' tournament. Uh, and then eight point four, um, is our elementary extracurricular positions. Uh, we do, we, we had secondary ready in June, but, uh, elementary is listed there for you.
Okay. Uh, questions on items eight, one through eight, four? Okay, uh, we'll leave those on consent then. Okay, curriculum?
Uh, nine point one is a student request to graduate, uh, early, June twenty twenty-five for, uh, for that student, Daisy Patrick. And nine point two, um, each summer, we task both elementary and secondary. Secondary, we'll actually have a list on next week, I'll get that to you, uh, probably again tomorrow. But elementaries is on there for you to look through the purchase of library books, uh, that, that we try to do annually to add to our collection.
Okay. Questions? Okay, hearing none, move to human relations.
Uh, we have our list ten point one of substitutes. Obviously, we add to that as the year goes on, but, uh, that's our beginning list. Uh, ten point two, uh, between June and, and now, we've had a few folks, uh, go different ways. Uh, those are listed there for you. We also have quite a few employment positions, including, uh, some re-designations. I know next week, Mr. Wagner will join us, uh, as you know, he's been with us as a social studies teacher and will be joining us as, as an assistant principal, uh, taking over for Mr. Lugar. Um, and he, he wants to come next week and say hi, so we'll introduce him when he's here. Uh, we also have a new board secretary, uh, so Ann will be serving, uh, as board secretary. Um, the, uh, uh, we had two folks that over the summer, we put in place for extended school year. So those are actually retroactive that I had approved, uh, because we couldn't wait till August to do this, the, uh, to hire someone to cover the summer. Um, we have some teachers who have received tenure, uh, for us. And we have some teachers that are moving on, uh, moving columns due to academic credits. Uh, ten point eight is actually the annual, uh, reappointment of our school police officer. Uh, ten point nine, uh, if you look at that document, we have our mental health teams, our suicide awareness, our Title IX, uh, quite a few individuals there. And ten point ten is our, uh, internship agreement with Kutztown University for, uh, student placements.
Okay, great, a lot. Okay, any questions on these, uh, human relations items?
Yes, is the ten point eight with the school police officer, is that yearly that we have to do?
Okay.
Yes.
Yep. Any other questions?
I just wanted to note that on ten point eight, the resolution, um, is dated for today's date and we would actually be voting and adopting it for next meeting.
Okay, great, good catch. All right. We'll make that change, any other questions? Okay, good, um, yeah, and again, if questions come up on any of these items, uh, during the week and we need to move something to discussion, just let us know, okay? Okay, great, information?
Uh, this, every year we get the state tax equalization information, we send that out to you. Um, or that's attached, um, I think we actually sent it out too at one point. Maybe not, I don't remember. Um, it's not very interesting, but we, we get it to you. Uh, also, um, this would be the last time this is on here, but, um, the sa- health and safety plan, which we haven't changed in three years-ish. Um, we don't think we need to change anything yet, I, again, and then it'll be done.
Okay.
So, um, I have, that's it for information.
Okay, great.
Okay, twelve new business, um, this one is I, uh, dual enrollment. So Leanne's going to have a little bit of a discussion next week about the new budget and the implications for us and the different ways we're getting money through special ed. One of them, um, one of the ways we can get some money is for innovative slash, um, additional, um, educational services. For instance, full day K and since we happen to have numbers that allow us to pilot a full day K this year, we actually can pay the teacher's salary out of this grant money that's coming, so that's, that was a positive. However, another way we thought we could use this, we had been talking about the possibility of doing this, um, was to, our students that take dual enrollment classes. Now for us, a dual enrollment class often is through hack, although sometimes, and I'll use my daughter as an example, she knew where she was going to school. They offered dual enrollment classes, so she could actually take courses online at the university she was attending. So then you don't even have to worry about transferring things in because it's already through that. When she left Northern Lebanon, she had twenty-one credits, uh, going into her first year at college, so she was three credits away from being a sophomore. Uh, and in turn, now is graduating, uh, in three years. So, um, there's an advantage to dual enrollment, there's no doubt about it. The disadvantage from a parent's standpoint or a family's standpoint is there's a cost. And up until this point, the families have, have paid that cost. The Viking Foundation on occasion has helped with books, um, but the, the out-of-pocket cost. Now, it's not nearly as much as if you were attending school full-time, typically it's in a four hundred dollar range. We have eleven students, uh, taking a total of twelve dual enrollment classes currently. That could change, it could be a few more, could be a few less, but in like, in all likelihood, a couple more stragglers might decide to do it. Um, what I'm proposing to the board is actually to, uh, to make a motion next week to pay for those students to take those dual enrollments using the grant money that we would currently have, uh, or have coming. Pennsylvania has done some other grants like this for dual enrollment in the past, um, and I don't know if they'll go back to it and continue to do it. But I've talked about dual enrollment classes with the board before and I really do believe that it is, it is the direction that colleges are going to be forcing kids to go. Uh, and when we talk about a situation where offering our kids, uh, the ability to, um, take some things that they're really interested in, this opens up a whole new world, uh, for them. Um, it, we count it as an AP course, if it's a dual enrollment, so it's weighted like an AP course would be. Uh, the advantage for students is they wouldn't have to, they don't take the AP test, uh, the credits come automatically. So that, that is available to us if we'd like to try that and see, you know, see how that goes. Um, I'd, I guess for the board, I'd like to know, uh, and, and you don't have to tell me tonight, you can tell me throughout the week, what questions you might have, what thoughts you might have. We'll make a motion, uh, for the agenda and then, um, you know, go whatever direction the board feels is, is correct, is the correct way to go.
You don't have to answer this right now, but just my question would be, I mean, what would be the, what are some of the negatives? You know, what, what would be the downside of offering this? I mean, other than, I mean, obviously, if the grant money isn't there, we can't, we wouldn't be able to continue it.
Yeah, we would have to decide from a financial standpoint, um, whether it's something we want to fund, uh, long-term, depending on what that, you know, what those total costs would be. Uh, we did not advertise this, so I would say that we have a normal amount in it correctly, or, or currently. But I do think this is going to become a more popular option. Uh, internally, operationally, we want to have a situation where, uh, we may want to open up a room and staff it with someone so that students, so for instance, I'm a senior and I have two dual, dual enrollment classes, so I have a class first period, but I don't have a second class until period four. Well, I need a place to go period two, so I can work on my dual enrollment course in period three, so I can work on my other dual enrollment course. So there, there is some logistical things that we'll have to take care of in order to give them, provide them a place to, to go. Uh, my daughter actually went home and did them, she took some classes here and then in the afternoon she went home. But she, that just happened because her classes were aligned, boom, boom, boom. I think she had one break and at the time I think she, I mean, she came to my office, but that's not the situation for most kids. Not typically, no. Um, so, uh, so, uh, other than that, I, I don't know that there's, it's a change. I mean, AP has always been, I mean, I was in the first AP calculus class that Northern Lebanon offered and it's been around for a long time. I think more, more and more kids are going to go this route, whether we want them to or not, whether, you know, whether we continue to o- offer AP or not. I think more and more kids are going to go this route. Um, I think the main negative is cost.
And if, if they're taking courses, like, would we have some say? I, I mean, if, if we're taking grant money, would we have some say over what that course actually is? Like, would there, would it have to meet some type of criteria for us to be able to?
Well, we'd want to do a few things, we, we would definitely want to set up some procedures going into this. For instance, um, I would want to reimburse. So, uh, my son happens to be enrolled in an English course. It, it's his fourth English class, which he needs to graduate from Northern Lebanon, but it's at Hack, so it will transfer probably to whatever college he goes to. Um, but we've already paid that bill, so I, I think we should set it up like a teacher. You must achieve a passing grade, a C or better, and if you do and submit the receipt to the school district, then we will reimburse you. Um, are there criteria on the courses? That, I mean, yes and no. I mean, some of the courses correspond to things that potentially you could take here. Some of them do not. I know that when my daughter took courses, that some of them were more geared, more geared toward her major in college, but they, she had already decided what she was going to do and they had already given her the list of these are the courses that, that you're going to need and take, these are what was recommending. So the stipulation could be your college is recommending, or it takes the place of something that, another advantage for our kids, schedule flexibility in terms of, because we, you know, again, we have so many single, what we call singleton courses that are two classes offered one time, but they're at the same time. Well, now if one of those, for instance, is in English, you could take the dual enrollment course, uh, and, and you can do that any period. And then take the other course that, um, you know, that falls during that period. So it creates some flexibility for kids as well.
Are there any other districts that are doing this? I mean, we don't have to reinvent the wheel here, right?
Uh, you know, that's a great question. I, I know that there were districts that took the grant two years ago to pay for kids taking dual enrollment courses, so yes. I don't know if, I, I, I've never, frankly, never asked my colleagues in Lebanon County that question. Mostly because I don't care, because I care about them, but I do believe that this is something, I do believe in dual enrollment and, and the possibilities that exist for our kids because of it.
Yeah, I guess my questions are along the same lines. I, I, I think, um, you know, the long-term sustainability of it. I mean, if we think that this is the right direction for the district to go, I'd like, you don't have to answer it tonight, but I'd love to hear, you know, maybe for next week, the, how could we make this a long-term sustainable option? Um, it's, it would be great for the kids this year, uh, that'd be a great bonus for their families, but then, um, you know, if the families here afterwards, well, they paid for dual enrollment last year and then the next year we don't have it. So if this becomes a budget item, you know, a proposal, some idea of what we think that might be from a budgetary standpoint going forward, or if there's other grant options, um, I guess another thought I have is, you know, is it a consideration to maybe contribute to the, to the cost instead of, you know, covering it entirely? If that could help us make it a long-term sustainable thing? So I'd, maybe just to hear some of those thoughts over the course of the week.
Yeah.
How we could look at that.
Yeah, it, it's hard to project because it's something that really hasn't, um, been widespread until after COVID. Um, uh, again, for us, I know that our, my son's class costs approximately four hundred dollars. So right now we have twelve classes, eleven kids for twelve classes, so we're, we're looking at about four thousand eight hundred dollars. Now, again, grant money this year, but, um, you know, even if that doubles, it's not an unbearable number for the district in the future, but if it winds up being a hundred classes, then it starts to get more cumbersome. Okay, so.
Any other thoughts, um, from directors? I mean, I, I think we can put this on the agenda unless there's any, okay, then we'll, we'll certainly place them on the agenda for next week, yep.
Okay, and then finally, I know Dave's been doing some work. We actually had a little bit of a discussion with, uh, with Brooke as well, um, about, uh, kind of where, where we are as a district, we had the resolution. In the meantime, on his own, he's been doing some work. I thought you might want to give an update on some of the stuff that's happened with the PIA double A.
Yeah, sure, um, so since we passed that resolution, um, I started contacting districts and saying, hey, guys, this is what we've done. We're supporting this House bill, did you know about it? Here's our resolution, would you mind, would you consider doing something like it? Um, would you mind conveying support to your representatives? And would you mind paying attention to what's going on in the PIA double A? Um, and I started getting an awful lot of attention from, and good questions from school board members and people I've been talking to. And as I'm going about this, I have some questions I can't answer. And when I ask the PIA double A, I really ain't, ain't getting anywhere. And I think it's because I'm kind of going as an individual, as opposed to like a member district. So some of the questions I asked the PIA double A aren't really going anywhere because I'm just like an outspoken person. I don't have like a district, you know, like it's not coming from Gary or the athletic director, or it's not on Northern Lebanon letterhead. But I guess I'm at a point now where I'd like to get a little more serious and, um, seek a little more support to maybe try to get on the PIA double A agenda and have some discussions about some of this stuff. But it's hard to do as just an individual board member. So I guess I'm, I'm at a point now where I need to start getting board support. Um, and I don't really know what that means just yet, but, um, maybe like to get on the agenda or to, if other school districts would like to like join, they're not just joining me, they're joining Northern Lebanon with, if we have any questions that we'd like to bring up to PIA double A. So, yeah, I guess I'm seeking more support somehow.
And I'll ask Brooke to chime in, uh, we talked about this a little bit. I think we cut, we got turned down for our agenda request, um, claiming that it was too late in their process, that they had already put it public. Uh, their next meeting is September, we intended to, after the board update and board meeting, uh, as a district to place an item on the board agenda. I don't know what that means for the district, I don't, or on the PIA double A board agenda, I don't know what that means for the district. I don't know if that means we have an opportunity to talk. Um, I'll, obviously, um, you know, I think Dr. Kuiper could, could say a few words, but I think Dave actually has become more of an expert on this particular topic than probably anyone else we have in a district. Um, so Brooke, can, can you just talk a little bit about, uh, options that we have, uh, you know, in terms of, Dave is a school board member, is there anything? I mean, there's some, a little bit of red tape there, we'll make sure we're doing it correctly. Maybe it is the, maybe it's, maybe it's Dr. Kuiper and myself that need to have the conversations. Again, at the PIA double A, I, I don't even know if you get to talk, they may just, you still may just get three minutes and that's it. But, uh, any other thoughts that I'm missing?
Yeah, so I mean, the way I think about it is, so if this, if, if, if a majority of the board is supportive of this being something that the district supports and wants to pursue more questions on, I think it'd be appropriate to throw that on an agenda to kind of authorize who your, who your representatives are, right? Because right now Dave has been doing, Mr. Klein's been doing this work kind of on his own. Um, and to the extent that it can go further, it probably would be more effective with support of the board. And we want to make sure that Mr. Klein is protected, that he, you know, because he's a board member, that if he is out there making requests, attempting to get on agendas, that he knows, like, am I acting just of my own interest? Or am I acting on behalf of the board? And that he's real clear in who he's representing and how. So I think, uh, number one would be. So I think number one would be, is, is the board interested in, in him further pursuing this on their behalf? And how would that work in combination with the administration? I think sounds like a great idea. And I, and then I think the question is, what are the steps that the board would want? Is it just, you know, yeah, we'd like you to pursue this a little further and see if you can't get on the agenda? And then these would be the basic points, you know, that, that we would want you to be able to raise on our behalf. And you could say, you're speaking on behalf of the board, you're our representative when, when you address these issues. I think in that situation, if we go to that level of formality, it will be really important, Mr. Klein, I'm sure will do this, to just give you guys regular updates and make sure he's really, really clear on what the board is actually after. So that his personal opinions and feelings don't come in the mix, but it's really like, hey, what, what are the priorities that we have? And, and my conversations with him would have been very positive. He certainly wants to stay in the right lane, and I want to make sure there's just proper protection for the board and Mr. Klein. Because he, if the board isn't interested, he might pursue this on his own, and that's totally fine. You know, he's not going to be using his district email unless, of course, it becomes a, a board priority. So I think you have a couple different things to decide on, ways you can address it. But the big one would be, you know, is the board interested in Dave asking more formal questions relative to the resolution you passed on behalf of the board, not just in his private capacity?
Thanks, Brooke. Would you recommend that we have a written resolution up for a vote that would lay out those parameters and specify the scope of, of Dave's authority?
Yes, whatever you do, I think it should be an agenda item that you approve that says, we authorize, you know, Mr. Klein and the following individuals, say superintendent, athletic director, whatever it is, to represent the board's interests along the following parameters, and you can give him some guidance and an agenda item.
Okay. Okay, thoughts, questions, discussion? I'm certainly willing to, to put that on the agenda, but I would like to have a draft resolution. And if, you know, if we can't get that by next Tuesday, I mean, first of all, I just want to say, Director Klein, I think your advocacy has been tremendous. And, and just to reiterate that he's been doing this on his own behalf. Certainly, he has the capacity of a school board director, but he's been acting on his own behalf, and I think he's been doing a great job. So just want to commend you for that. But do you think it'd be possible to have a draft if you were to, to pull something together for next Tuesday?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll work on something.
And, and we can work, we can help, you know, pull that together too. Okay, great. Any concerns, thoughts? Issues with that being a agenda item for next week? Okay, great. Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Brooke, appreciate it.
Absolutely, and, and again, thanks to Mr. Klein, this is a great example of a board member wanting to stay in the appropriate lane and be most effective for the board, and I just think it's a great example of coming back and making sure he's checking in. So thanks to Mr. Klein.
Yes, and there's an article in Leb Town, if you haven't seen it, it was a very good article, I think, I think Dave expressed his, his intentions really well there, so thank you, Director Klein, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that's it for our agenda for this evening, so if there's nothing else, this meeting, oh, do you have something?
Rumors. Does, for the high school and middle school, will they be ready after Labor Day? Or is it going to be delayed, online classes for those folks?
We don't anticipate that. As a matter of fact, I'll announce, I'll announce that we, I'll send it to you in email too, just so you remember. But we would like to, we were granted access starting this week to start cleaning some things. It was unexpected. It was ahead of schedule. Mason's crew was over unpacking things that we had put in, you know, stored away to get out of the way, putting those away and beginning to, to do their cleaning and waxing floors actually in some areas. We don't, we were a little worried about when the building was being turned over and teachers being able to access rooms in specific areas with open house. And just from a pure, hard to get your room on a Tuesday morning and have a turnaround and host parents on a Wednesday evening. However, from a school starting standpoint, unless something unusual would happen between now and then, we do not anticipate any issues starting school on time. We will double check things next week and, and make a final determination on open house. If we do kind of a, we could do a meet the teacher and maybe a little tour later on or something like that, but we'll figure that out. We're going to walk through it next week. But we are a little bit ahead of schedule actually with cleaning and, and, and getting some things done in terms of Mason's crew. And I actually am, we will be available at 5:15. We can meet over at, anywhere in particular that you want to start. Door 11.
The old middle school entrance.
Where the circle is for the board to walk through next Tuesday at 5:15 before the board meeting. If, if anyone is interested. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Yeah, good question.
Great question.
I don't know the nature of the rumors or what the concerns are, but also just for the public's information, I hope it's very clear that the intent was never to have renovations complete by, by the start of school, that this is an ongoing project that's going to take place during the school year as well. So I, I don't know if that's the, if that's at, at the heart of some of the questions, but it's easy to drive by and say, it doesn't look like.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, there'll be some things that are maybe a little better than what people anticipate. Some of the paving will be done and will look nice and new in a lot of areas and certain areas. You know, I think that, I, I know that there were, there've been, we put a video online, we're going to have another one shortly, and there's some areas that look torn apart, but when I look at the, did I say it wrong about the paving? When you look at some of those pictures, for instance, one of the pictures that's in the video is locker rooms. They're not intended to be done by school starting. They're going to be continuing to work on that. So if I'm someone in the public and, you know, I don't have that timeline, I'm thinking, oh my goodness, look at that. Look, there's stuff hanging from the, yes, but that, those, those will be areas that will be closed off and no one will be in those areas. So, you know, our concern is obviously the areas that, that were supposed to be completed by
Right.
the summer, so, yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.